Very important people because they take care of the very important people sitting in the front row. There has been a lot of buzz this summer at all the buildings and in Human Resources as we welcome 80 new employees to the Celine Area Schools. It is critical that I applaud the very important people, which are the building principals and district administrators, for their tireless dedication and commitment this summer to bringing 80 new folks to the district. They have been committed to a hiring process to identify the best people to support teaching and learning district-wide. You've heard me say many times that it takes many, many people to run an operation this big, and all of us, no matter what our role is, play an important role. I also need to thank the four women in the Department of Human Resources for their unwavering commitment to the flurry so that the majority of our new staff were able to start by August 20th. We are beyond excited to share Celine's longstanding traditions with our new hires, but we are equally excited for all of them to introduce a new lens to our district through their personal experiences and to share their expertise as educators on all levels. Together, we elevate, we challenge, and we identify ways to become better tomorrow than we are today. While many are not able to be here this evening, I do want to share some of the data around hiring. We have 28 new teachers that are coming in this year, three speech and language pathologists, six occupational therapists, one teacher consultant, one multi-tier system support personnel, one behavior certified behavior analyst, 18 new paraprofessionals, two custodians, three literacy tutors, three transportation employees, one administrative assistant, one CTE technician, three GSRP staff with a new leader in GSRP, two one-to-one nurses, three young five aides, three office staff, and one superintendent. It is my honor to welcome, while 42 of them were able to come to our new staff orientation in August, I will likely hold a make, not a makeup, but an alternative date in October for others to come. It is my absolute honor to welcome our new staff that are with us this evening. I'd ask that they come up to the podium and introduce themselves, and I want to thank them so much for choosing Celine Area Schools and for being part of our staff dedicated to educating these most important people. So, I have a handout up here. I've already kind of prepped them. If they'll come and introduce themselves, their position, their building location, and their years of education together, we'll welcome them into the Celine Area Schools. Thank you.
Carol, are we going to meet for a little picture afterwards over there?
We can always arrange for a picture.
Oh, we're good.
Yes, we did, in front of the bus.
No, you can Photoshop us in, it's all right.
Brad Gerby, where are you? He's going to start us off. All right. Yep, you can line right up.
Brad, do you need the stool, Brad?
Captain, my captain. All right, are we ready? All right, do you miss me? Brad Gerby, biology, chemistry, forensic science at the high school, and I think this is 23 years in education.
My name is Callie Lindo, and I teach kindergarten at Woodsland Meadows, and this is my first year.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jared Delgleish. I'm the band director at Celine Middle School and Heritage School, grades five through eight. You'll also see me on the Hornet Stadium at 6:45 a.m. with the marching band, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It's been going great, it's a lot of fun. And I traveled 2,260 miles to be here at Celine. Came from Bakersfield, California, originally from Wisconsin, but I was out there teaching for a little bit. This is my eighth year in education.
Hello, my name is Terrace Guy White. I'm first grade at Pleasant Ridge, and this is my seventh year in education.
Hi, my name's Katie Siski. I'm also first grade at Pleasant Ridge. I have been teaching for 23 years. My previous experience was in the Lakeview Schools in St. Clair Shores.
Hi, I'm Karen Hawk. I'm a teacher consultant at Pleasant Ridge Elementary, and this is my 10th year in education.
Hi, I'm Jill Kinsey. I'm an ESL teacher at Heritage and Woodsland Meadows, and this is my eighth year teaching.
I'm Peter Atkinson. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Heritage, and this is my first year teaching.
Hi, I'm Andrea Khan. I'm an occupational therapist. I'm at Liberty School, and I have been in the schools as an OT for three years, going on my fourth.
Hello, I am Ryan Petersmark. I am the newest art teacher at Celine High School, and this is going to be your 12th of teaching for me.
I'm Dave Ringe. I am the current district delivery driver, experienced with the schools for at least like 20-plus years, because I retired from the Celine Police Department, so I did a lot of the youth programs, evolved as a resource officer, so wanted to give back. So I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to support Celine Schools.
Well, thank you. Welcome back, and welcome to all of you from the Board of Education. We're so glad you're here, and we'll let you just let yourselves out at your own pace, unless, of course, you want to see our next group of speakers. I'd like to open the floor to public comment, please. We have one public comment. A member of the board can, you can get yourself ready if you want, can address the board for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note, the students will be given priority to speak on any topic, and the first public participation portion will be limited to one half hour. Normally, second participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for other comments. Students, however, can speak on any topic, not on the agenda. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy, and you cannot use this moment to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. And I'm looking at Quinn Burns, correct? The floor is yours, sir, and as soon as you start talking, we'll give you your three minutes. We'll start.
Hi, I'm not Quinn Burns. I am the, my name's Dan Routen, and we're here representing the Celine Boys Volleyball Team. We started in 2022 as a club, and after four seasons, we've been given the opportunity with the MHSAA, letting boys volleyball become a varsity sport. So, we're here today to thank school board, Superintendent Kowalski, Ashley Mantha, the athletic department, Ashley Howes with the community ed, current and former players. We just want to say thank you, as our journey has, you know, met, you know, our destination is we will be a varsity team representing Celine in 2026 in the spring. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. How do you spell your last name?
Routen.
R.A.
O.U.
R.O.U. Okay.
I kind of have the same thing to say as him, just a lot of thanks to the people in the community that have helped us. I'm Quinn Burns. I am a senior here at Celine. I've been playing volleyball since I was 10 years old, just a very long time, especially with my family. Just a couple of thanks to people that have helped us throughout our journey. First of all, thank you, Ashley Howes, who has started this program through the rec and ed about four years ago in 2022, just as Dan said, and she's supported us every single year from then on. Big thank you to Ashley Mantha for helping the boys team this year and getting it to be an official sport. Superintendent Kowalski, thank you very much for pushing it through the door in such an abrupt time. Thank you to my coach, Dan Routen. He's been with his team since 2022. He's helped us, just unfaltering faith in us, and it's just been really helpful throughout this process. And I'd like to thank the board finally, just for you guys' support throughout all this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and good luck this spring. I have no response to the public comment from last week. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Stubben.
Second, Berwick.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero, thank you so much. We have a little student, we have a student showcase tonight. First, I'd like to introduce the Link Crew, and we also have Harvest Buddies here. Have you figured out the order in which you're going to go? Harvest Buddies or? Let's let the little, we'll let the Wians go first. And I have everybody's name, but perhaps you might want to introduce yourselves. Is that the way you're going to do it, Ms. Sikler?
Yes. My name is Emily Sikler. I'm the proud principal of Harvest Elementary School, and I have five third-grade buddies with me that we're going to share a little bit about our program. One thing that we do is, once you become a third grader, you get to become a third-grade buddy. It is something that is very exciting at our school, and it's something that we take very seriously. We start it actually the very second day of school, because on the very first day of school, there are no young fives or kindergarteners that come, so you learn about that, but starting in the very second day of school, we become a buddy. And I thought it was very important for our third-grade buddies to teach you all about what happens and the very important role that third graders take as being a third-grade buddy. So without further ado, here are some buddies that are going to teach you about this important role that we have here at Harvest.
My name is Charlotte. My third-grade teacher is Ms. Kanadther. I think that being a third-grade buddy is really important, because we can cheer on young fives and kindergarten Harvest Hornets, especially if they are feeling a little nervous starting school.
My name is Mia. My Harvest third-grade teacher is Ms. Tarek. My buddies are Mara and Advika. They are very cute and smart. Buddies cheer on for young fives and kindergarten students in, on the first day of school, in the gym, and to their classroom, and read a story to them so they don't feel nervous at Harvest. We also made buddy surprises for our, for their lockers. We want them to love Harvest. Thank you very much.
My name is Gwen. My third-grade teacher is Ms. Pereira. I think being a third-grade buddy is really important, because we get to teach our young fives and kindergarteners Harvest Hornets what to do when they get older, like the Harvest Four Rules. The rules are, we are responsible for what I say, what I, what I do, how I help, and how I listen.
My name's Evelyn. My third-grade teacher is Ms. Kanadther. I have been waiting for a long time to be a third-grade buddy. I want to show my young fives and kindergarten buddies what to do, so they can feel comfortable at Harvest and in the school. It feels good to be a buddy and support the young fives and kindergarten, kindergarteners at Harvest.
My name is Cam. I'm a third-grade buddy. My, my teacher is Ms. Dobbins. I think that being a third-grade buddy is really important, because we can help our young fives and kindergarteners Harvest what it's, what to expect, like how to, for example, how to walk in the halls or open their lockers.
So you can see, starting school, there's, we have over 100 young fives and kindergarten students, and that is a lot of work, but with all of this help, like these five students that showed, and all the other third-grade students, it makes life way easier for all the adults. So, thank you so much for, for us being able to teach you all about third-grade buddies.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing. I know we all want to applaud and everything. I think this is a great program. When I was in kindergarten, I wish I had a third-grade buddy too. And the other thing I want to noted, note, Ms. Sikler, is that, that was some very good reading I was watching as well. So, thank you, thank you, thank you on behalf of the board, and I don't know if you want to ask any questions or just want to applaud, but thanks. Here, Gwen. Thank you so much.
We can either take a group photo, or I'm happy to take a photo in the hall. We could do Link Crew too, and at the end. We could do both at the end, maybe we have Link Crew present, and then we do.
All right, well, we're going to have the Link Crew.
And they can see what's coming.
All right, and the buddies and the Link Crew are going to come out together for a photograph with the board, I think. Thank you. All right, Link Crew.
My name's Lily, and I'm part of Link Crew. Link Crew is basically, kind of like the buddies explained, but we help the ninth graders. So it's a big school. It's really scary. I remember being a freshman. You don't know where your classes are. I remember I had health, and it was like, at the time, in the basement by the gym. I was so lost. I had no idea where to go, and I only had my sister, who was in the 12th grade, so she was kind of like my personal link leader, even though I had my own. So that was kind of my goal when becoming a link leader, is to like, be that big sister for everybody else, and you know, help with that. So it's a nationally recognized thing, something we participate here at the high school in Celine, and it's just kind of about helping out people and being a leader.
So, I'm here to talk a little bit about why Link Crew matters so much at our high school. As Lily already said, the high school can be a really intimidating place. It's very welcoming, but it's also very intimidating. You first walk in there, and it kind of looks like a community college, in my opinion at least. So, as somebody who moved between eighth grade and ninth grade, I was coming to a completely new school. I didn't know anybody, and so I would say that Link Crew, more than any other resource that was available to me at the time, was something that really helped me settle in. So, one of my Link Crew leaders was a varsity rower at the time, and she offered to bring me to a practice and sort of introduced me to the team, and now I'm a four-year rower. I'm also a varsity rower. I have the tape to show for it, but yeah, I just, it really helped me settle into the high school, and for that reason, I think Link Crew is super, super important. It is super significant in the lives of the new students at the high school. I know the slide, we don't have them up, but my slide here, it says, "It builds community, it encourages academic and personal growth, and it promotes a positive school climate." And I cannot say, like, it definitely does those things. It's very important. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Madeline Marshall. I chose to be a link leader because I wanted to make sure that everybody felt welcome at Celine High School, to know that they had a place, and it's okay if you get lost or fall up the stairs once or twice, because everybody does it. Don't be embarrassed about it. Link Crew is for us to be leaders, to show our students, like, you can grow up to be us one day, and you want to help those, like, be a role model, and just make sure that they're doing okay. And then they can always reach out to us. So, for us, we lead the freshman orientation. We show them around the school. We provide some fun activities that they can do to meet their peers that they are in advisory with the entire year, and they're in, with that class all four years, so it's very important that they get to know these students, and it's a more, a familiar face that they can see in the halls as well. We run fun lessons throughout the entire school year. This past Thursday, we actually ran a lesson about organization and how it can look different for everybody, but also studying habits, and so we shared some of our, that, like, tips and stuff, and then we also opened it up to the students so they could share theirs as well. We also host social events, so one of our big social events is orientation, where they get to see all their peers and just connect with people that they might not have seen in a while. But we also do, like I mentioned earlier, personal check-ins. We make sure to check in with all of our students through advisory. They know that they can reach out to us with anything that they have, but we are also reaching out to them. Like, we all reached out to our little link leaders, or like, little students, and just asked, like, told them, "I hope you have a great first day. I can't wait to see you tomorrow," making sure that they are doing well before their first test, and "How did it go?" We just truly are there to support them with everything that they are doing, and we want them to know that we are there for them, and that they can come to us with anything. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dylan, and I'm just here to talk a little bit about the process of what it's like to become a link leader and what we do to train, so that we can give the freshmen, like, the best experience possible. So we come, to become a link leader, we had to fill out an application, and then we do, go to this thing called May Day, where we kind of run through some of the activities, and we participate in the activities that we do on orientation ourselves. And then from there, a lot of us will get accepted into Link Crew, and then we will go to orient, we will go to orientation training, and we train for, I believe, it's about four hours, and eight hours in total, so two days, from about eight to 12 before orientation. And we train, and we plan, and we put together all the fun activities. I think one of the more notable things that I definitely, I remember from my freshman year, and I know a lot of people do, is we will put together costumes for our groups, and so that's something that we plan during those training days. That's also, and so those training days are just really essential to make sure that we can give everyone the best experience, and then I just want to, like, I've seen, I chose to be a link leader because I just think it's so important to help the younger students in the community. I know when I was a freshman, like, that's something that I really needed, and so I want to be that person for incoming freshmen.
Fantastic. Madeline, Sean, Dylan, and Lillian, do you have an advisor of this, for this group?
Yes, we have several, lots.
And could you introduce, in the microphone, could you introduce your two advisors, please?
We have Mr. Stukey with us today and Ms. Schroeder.
Yay, well, thank you so much for your time. I'm going to ask if the board has any questions to ask. Not too challenging, but.
Do you want us to mention our other ones that are not here today?
Well, they didn't show. Yes, that would be great, thank you.
We also have Mrs. Stukey, Mr. Brinkett, Lori Dawson, oh, Jen Bernard, Mr. Gaila, and all of our, like, staff at Celine High School.
And the rest.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? No, 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 one question?
Are all of you seniors? I know Madeline is, but you're all seniors?
We're all seniors, but it's a junior-senior thing.
Okay, that's what we question.
Your sophomore year, you can apply, and then get in, and then, you have to reapply, but like, they know you by that point, so most people do it their junior and senior year.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Well, thank you. Well, we're going to take a picture, and for those watching at home, there are people watching at home who have never heard of Link Crew before, have never heard of the buddies program, and they, I'm sure their eyes were wide open about this, and, and thank you so much for doing such a professional presentation. I appreciate that. So let's do a quick picture. Are we ready? Jacqueline?
Well, we're all together. I think that's a great.
Where do we cut?
Both legs. I don't think you need it. We're a lot here. I don't think you need it. We're a lot here. 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 We're a lot here.
Well, we're all settling down. I just want to say thank you once again. Goodbye, Gwen. Whoops.
Hi. Hi. Hi, Darcy. Can we go through the brushroom? Can we call our sunburner? No. I'm catching. I know. It's so dirty.
If there's anybody here for AP Gov., now you can all move to the front. Get in the splash zone.
You don't want to come closer?
It's the embarrassment zone. Thank you, the zone of embarrassment. Actually, it'll, the meeting is not going to go on much longer, I don't think. You can stay probably right to the very end. You were very lucky. Thank you, AP Gov. I like, we have one action item this evening, but I think it's going to be very quick, as the motion is to appoint somebody as a voting delegate and somebody else as the alternate representing the Celine Board of Education of the 2025 MASP Delegate Assembly being held on Thursday, October 23rd. Before we do, are there any of us who are going to that? I am not going to that. I cannot make it this year.
I'm out of the country that week. That's what I mean.
I would like to withdraw the motion, as nobody, unless you change your mind and would like to go to Traverse City. Okay. We're all busy that night. Just so the rest of the community knows, many, many times, we do go, and it's a wonderful opportunity, the annual leadership conference. I was at the summer leadership conference, but it looks like we have no representation this year. That's fine. I'm sure somebody will take notes for us. Thank you. I couldn't make it this year. Okay, no, that's all right, that's right. So I'd like to withdraw that motion and get on to discussion items, and I'm going to throw it over to our Board Finance Committee Chair, Tim Austin, who's also our treasurer, taking furious notes from the meeting this evening. Ready? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so we actually had a little, a little longer meeting with more discussion today, but we did have a public comment. Greg from Related Digital came out and just kind of explained their project in Celine Township that they're looking to do, and wanted to kind of get that information out there to us. From a discussion items, we talked about the state budget or the lack thereof, the state budget. It's not looking good, like they're going to have anything solved. Miranda mentioned that they did surveys, a bunch of schools, and I think like 200 and some schools responded, but 43 of the, 43% of the respondents said if they do go into like a shutdown, they would not have, if they don't get the October payment, they would not have enough money to make payroll. So, something will have to be done to kind of shore that up. Then, the audit, that will, that's looking really good. They'll bring that to the full board in November. Miranda's not tracking any findings or anything like that, so everything looks good. We are looking to be better than our amended budget as far as the fund balance goes when that comes to the, but I won't spoil all that news right now, that good news. Enrollment and headcount, there are also some good news there, too. We're trending better than what we budgeted for, for enrollment. We'll still probably be in the negative, you know, down, but not quite what we budgeted for, so. And we kind of talked about some school of choice things and stuff like that, so more discussion on that later, too, so. Anything else from anybody else? Jason, Nate?
Just to point out, since you mentioned it, the 43% of the schools that responded to that survey saying that they would not be able to make payroll, Celine is not one of them. I just wanted to stress that to everybody.
Thanks.
I've heard, if we, I don't mind if the rest of the board asks the questions of you. I've heard that some districts like Plymouth Canton are good until maybe the end of September for feeding students before they run out of funding. It's been two months, one week and a day since they were required to have a budget, and it's very, it's been frustrating at the higher ed level, at K-12 level, and I appreciate you keeping your eyes on this for us.
Jason brought up a good point, asked Miranda, kind of, what, what do we look like? And we've got about three months worth of uh, in our fund balance to, to operate for three months. So it's, we're in better shape than a lot of school districts.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other comments or notes? No? Thank you very much, Tim, for your work on that. Uh, administration board updates. We'll start with our superintendent and then go over to Nate.
Thank you, Board President Mick Bay. So as uh, the last couple of weeks have gone on, I've had the joy of watching our district come alive with students. Um, the excitement of a brand new school year has arrived and we are within it. The halls are buzzing, classrooms full of energy, and there's a contagious spark that I know for our staff and for me. Um, also reminds us why we do this work, why we spend all summer planning. So um, lots of smiles that I've seen it drop off. Um, and I'm getting to learn myself about all of the great things happening in our classrooms. But I do wanna share some updates with you. Um, first, we're full speed ahead getting the word out and um, educating our stakeholders, community members about the upcoming CTE millage. This is a countywide initiative that will support not only career and technical education, but also pre-K through 12, real world experiential learning. Um, so some of us might have that old model of voc ed in our heads. Um, CTE is no longer what we kinda think of as like shop, I guess, back in the day, I've heard, I've been told. Um, so really, we're looking at industry-connected experiences. Again, experiential learning, health sciences, cybersecurity, aviation, robotics, and so much more. The first did you know that kind of um, centered me as a new resident of Washtenaw County is that eighty-six percent of our CTE students do go on to the college after graduation. And that was a figure that really stood out to me. We also know that the demand for CTE courses is real. Um, it's grown seventy percent in nearly four years. And so this millage would provide a sustainable funding to expand opportunities, protect some of our own spending on CTE by cost sharing. Um, so we're gonna make sure that in my community message this Friday, you'll have um, a peek at three official informational sessions from the ASD. But also myself and Kara Summer will be continuing those engagements um, around the community. I have one at Rotary. Um, I know next week with the Chamber, so um, and we'll continue to share through Parent Square. Uh, over the past two weeks, I've been shaking lots of hands and um, interacting with lots of folks. I just wanted to give a shout out to the music students of Ms. D's class, Dia's class, uh, who proudly showcased their um, their music at the Celine Area Schools Day at the fair. Those students who also proudly showcased their animals. It was wonderful. Um, wanted to thank Celine High School, um, Clubs and Activities for an amazing open house. It was really, really neat, neat to see. I think it brought a lot of folks in for conference, um, for open house, which is nice. Also wrapping up our fall open houses, our amazing staff at Celine Middle School, Celine High School, Young Adult Programs, Celine Alternative High School, and our E C S E programs, all wrapped last week. Those are, you know, we're ongoing for a couple of weeks, open houses. Then on Saturday, I had the chance to meet a lot of folks at the Celine Farmers Market. So just to mark your calendars, um, tomorrow is our first community listening lab, um, with myself. Um, you may have had them before, but as the new superintendent, it's my first community listening lab. These are open invitations for anyone to join me. It will be at Heritage. Uh, the questions that I have to guide us are um, just engaging folks in conversation. What's working for us? Where can we grow? Um, what are the hopes that our students, our families, our parents carry with them in the future of our organization and learning for students? Um, also, um, we've been handing out these nifty calendars at some of those events. And we discovered a small error, so if you did get one of these calendars um, at a open house event or one of the tabling events that we've done, just bring it back to the district office and we'll switch it out with a new one. So, um, if not, just maybe don't look at June. Don't, don't get excited about June. Okay, lastly, the STEAM Center grand opening, Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twelve to four, as that's taking shape with our team and our partners. We're gonna have tour, guided tours, activities. Please make sure you're marking your calendars. It's gonna be a great day. And boys volleyball, of course, shared with you that we've officially added, boys volleyball is a self-funded varsity sport this, for this coming spring. This reflects the student interest and community support of boys volleyball. I'm proud of how athletics and community education have worked together. And thank you to A.D. Mantha. Lastly, the, most of my last two weeks have been in schools, in school visits when we haven't been doing other things. Uh, we started off in some AP and CTE classes at Celine High School, um, mid-week last week. And then last Friday, decided to take a look at specials classes in our elementaries. Specials classes nurture creativity, collaboration, and healthy lifestyles. Research shows that specials strengthen core academics. They improve attendance and build engagement. Beyond the data though, I saw joy, art, iLab, all kinds of fun stuff happening. And so from the future-ready opportunities that we need to focus on in CTE and the upcoming millage, to the day-to-day classroom interactions and um, community, it has been a wonderful couple of weeks in Celine Area Schools.
Thank you. I'll pass it over to Nate and we'll just work our way down the table. Thank you, Nate.
I'd like to recognize Ben Reed, who is the new band director for the high school. Obviously filled some really big shoes and he has absolutely hit a homerun. Last uh, Friday night, we had our home opener and three groups that really make Friday night lights, what it really is, is when the band comes down, the drum lines hitting their beat and the first note of the band plays, you get goosebumps. And then even when you wanna go get a snack over halftime, you can't because that's when the cheer squad and the dance team come out. And those three groups really make Friday night lights, what it's all about. And great work to all the hardworking members of the band, the cheer and the dance team.
Yeah, I'd concur with that. It was um, fun going to the game and uh, seeing all that and the, the Hornet pride and Chad tough, uh, all the orange. So um, that, and then uh, also wanna thank Carol and her team because um, the eighty new employees, that's a lot. And a lot to onboard and that's uh, kind of exciting for a lot of new families too, that have a job here in Celine. So, and then um, lastly, uh, August thirty-first, you know, we were up north for the long holiday. And one thing we don't do up north ever is watch TV, but this August thirty-first was a little bit different because we had a young man from Celine named CJ Carr playing in his first football game. And uh, so all of our friends and family, we dragged a TV outside onto the deck and so we watched it by the lake. And it was just, it was really exciting to see and be the, the pride of Celine. And um, you could see it on social media too. A lot of people were engaged in that. Uh, it was, it highlighted the Chad Tough Foundation again. And um, so I was really proud and uh, um, he actually had, he had a really good game too for his first start, so was proud of him, so.
Uh, just wanted to second the uh, STEAM Center opening at the high school on September twenty-seventh, twelve to four. Uh, STEM Boosters is proud to be partnering with the district for that uh, event. And then just a note that September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. You are loved, you are wanted, and you have resources. If you need help, please reach out to family, friends, counselors. There is Washtenaw Community Mental Health and you can always call nine eight eight if you are looking for help. Thank you.
So I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, um, for, for the fifth year in a row, I'm participating with the Penn Pals. If you ever get an invitation to do Penn Pals with the young kids at Woodland Meadows, please do. I'm meeting with, we're, I'm writing to one, it's either Mr. Williams, Miss Williamson's or Perry's class. Uh, congratulations also to the football. You guys did a much better job than I could have. Um, I also wanna say best of luck to our student representative, Gillian Hayes, who's uh, at a cross-country meet this evening. And also to the boys volleyball team, I'm the men's uh, club advisor at Eastern Michigan University. And uh, I don't have to do much. I just have to sign a paper once a year and I go to the game every now and then. And also thanks for the reminder about Chad Tough. I'm gonna be doing Run Tough the day after the STEAM opening. We'll see if I can make it. It's only a mile this year. I think Nate, maybe we should create a team. You do trail running. Alright, look for the email from me, okay? Thank you. And Jason too, I understand, does a little running in his.
Only one chased.
Only one chased. Thank you very much. I'm gonna, yeah, chased. Okay, sorry. I'm gonna pass it over to Jennifer. Thank you.
Thanks. I hope Gillian and um, the rest of our cross-country team are doing a great job. I think the girls won first and I think the boys might have won first as well. And check me, Savannah took first place for the, for the girls. Um, it was great to see the new staff. Thank you to all of them. And I appreciate Carol saying that she would have a makeup session for those who couldn't attend this evening, so we look forward to welcoming, welcoming them in person as well. And it's always great to start with kids, I think, in our, in our boardroom. And love those littles from Harvest and Link Crew. Um, congratulations to boys volleyball. That's super exciting when we have a new varsity sport come onboard. And I know the hard work and journey that they have had to get to that, get to today's date. Um, this morning, Rachel and I attended our Foundation for Celine Area Schools monthly meeting. It was the first meeting that we had met for in a while, I think since June. Um, so there was quite a few updates. We welcomed two new trustees, Amy and Sarah. We um, we had two new student representatives join us, both from the class of twenty-twenty-seven, Dante and Brooke. Um, let's see, a couple of other updates that I heard, we were talking a little bit about career and technical education. I have some flyers, oops, some flyers if the team wants to look at any of those statistics. We talked a little bit about how in politics, school districts um, can't do some things and other things board members can do. Sometimes we're restricted. We're not so restricted in saying, please vote for this proposal. So I would encourage us to talk as a team about maybe some type of public statement on behalf of the board in support of this for the November vote. That would be great. October, sounds good. Um, important events coming up with the foundation include our fall luncheon and fundraiser on October twenty-second, which will have a STEAM focus. It will be at Celine High School, so we can show off some of that new space. Um, and then way in the um, winter, on February twentieth, we have our dueling pianos uh, event, which was great last year, so looking forward to that. Um, from the financial perspective, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand to give away in grants this year. So I know Kara is working on getting that information out to um, the teaching staff, but buildings and students are eligible for these as well. So please think about that. I wanted to thank, out of updates today, I wanted to thank Rachel for all of the work she's doing in the community and all of the um, all of the events that she's attending to really um, integrate into our community. It's infinitely appreciated. So thank you so much. Um, now that our open houses are concluded, I wanted to thank all of the staff who stayed late again for another reason. Um, I really appreciated being at the high school for um, Activities Night and for the open houses last week. And Friday, I got to volunteer with Junior Hornet Cheer. Um, that's our fundraiser for the year. And it's another really great example of partnership between athletics and community education. And a hundred and twenty-five littles is quite fun. Um, Michael, you're gonna like this one. My last thing is a request for us to consider our homecoming parade, which is on September nineteenth. Um, I think four of us, it was me, you, Brad, and Susan who walked last year. So if we wanna do something, let's think about that and um, show up at Celine High School. That's it.
Uh, I really, one of my favorite things is at this meeting, seeing um, the new educators and staff come to the meeting. And I enjoy always reading through the um, resumes of all our new um, team members. Uh, and this year was no exception. I um, will just put a special shout out to the um, speech therapists and occupational therapists just because I work with a lot of those fine people in my regular life. And uh, I'm really glad that we're investing in our uh, students who need uh, that support at school. So uh, those are excellent resources and welcome to everyone. Um, that's an exciting group of people joining the community. I think I also wanted to highlight uh, Dr. Kowalski's hard work and I'm so excited to have her here with us in the school year starting. Uh, from our littlest kids to the young adults, everyone's happy to be back, I'm sure. And uh, I'm glad to be back as well.
Uh, wanna echo uh, what Tim said uh, about bringing on eighty new staff. That's, that's phenomenal. That's a, it's a big undertaking. So good job, Carol and team. Uh, congrats to the boys volleyball team for getting the recognition as a varsity sport. I wanted to play volleyball when I was in high school and we didn't have one, so that's really exciting for the boys to have that. Uh, big shout out to uh, uh, Mrs. Sickler and Harvest for the third grade buddies. I remember my youngest daughter loved to be in a third grade buddy, absolutely. Uh, that was the thrill of her lifetime, I think. Uh, uh, so that's a really great program and I think that's terrific. Uh, and I just wanna remind all the parents out there to be very vigilant with their kids, uh, with their electronics and the games that they're playing. If uh, anybody follows me on Facebook, uh, nor is anything about my background uh, with safety, security, cybersecurity. Uh, just wanna give a, a big reminder to parents to be very vigilant and uh, be monitoring what their kids are doing online, especially with some of the games that are emerging. I won't name any of them from the board table. But if any, parents have any questions, they can feel free to reach out to me directly and I can help them with resources on uh, trying to keep their kids safe online. Cuz that's uh, that's a growing threat right now with our kids. So I just want everybody to be aware of that.
I'd like to pass the mic over to Rachel for one more thing.
And thank you to our AP Government students from a former AP Gov teacher, to, to you all for being here tonight.
It's really more of a punishment, no, just joking. We're, we're so glad you're here, really we are. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed, please?
Uh, so moves, Dubbin.
Support Tizidis.
Thank you very much. Uh, without discussion, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Great, thank you so much. And items on the next agenda, Superintendent? A few things. There will be something. It's...
We have a wonderful student showcase and I'm sorry. Kara Davis is gonna help me out here. I apologize.
Our annual MyCup update, our annual overview.
You saw my eyes and how I was like, we just talked about the... Yes, we'll be having our MyCup update and some of teacher and learning department updates and, and some sharing of data and all the great work that's happening in our classrooms and in that department and beyond.
Thank you. Ms. Yonkey, is there any more public comment for this evening? No, thank you very much. Our next meeting will be held on September thirtieth. We're missing a week, uh, skipping ahead a week, uh, at six-thirty. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this regular Board of Education meeting at seven, let's just say seven, let's just drag this out to seven-twenty.
So moves, Tizidis.
JT?
Support.
Support Tim Austin. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Seven zero. Thank you so much.